Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to have your attention this time. I'd like to go ahead and call the meeting to order. Before we get started, I'd like to call the board. Vice Chairman Taylor, you're Councilman Varying, you're Councilman Flowers, Councilman Tripp.
Here.
Madam Clerk, let me inform you that we have a four president. Welcome everyone here this evening. Today is Tuesday, May 7, 2024. This is our regular scheduled meeting of the month of May. County Council meets every month on the first Tuesday of each month, typically on the first Tuesday of each month. And today is the first Tuesday. We do have some special guests with us this evening. But before we get to that, let me ask Councilman Taylor, if he will, please go for an indication following by the flag.
Most gracious everlasting Father, we thank you for your amazing grace. We thank you for Collington County, South Carolina. We thank you, Lord, for all the staff, the administration. Thank you for this county council, the business purposes for which we are to meet tonight. You said in all labor there is profit and is required of the steward to be found faithful. So we thank you, Lord, for your grace on our life to be found faithful and prudent in decision making. We thank you for your grace over Collington County and the people who live, work, and invest and play here. And we thank you, Lord, for your amazing grace. In Jesus' name.
Blessed are we to see the light of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and invisible with the very name of Jesus.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Taylor. This time I'd like to welcome everyone here this evening. We do have some special guests with us tonight. We've got the Mayor of Collinville, Mr. Doolan is present somewhere out there.
Here I am. Thank you.
I think the mayor of Edison Beach actually just walked in. Glad to have you here. We have superintendent of education, Ms. Williams is with us, Ms. Williams. Also, the chairman of the school board is here, Sheriff Wood. Are there any other school board members? I forgot a couple of them. Glad to have y'all with us this evening. And of course, we've got some veterans I see out there. They are most important, yes. And of course, all of you are taxpayers. We are glad to have you, glad to have you here with us this evening. We're going to move here on the agenda. The first item we have under four here is approval of minutes of the regular meeting of April 2nd, 2024, and a budget part session of April 25th, 2024. Move minutes.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Brings us to awards and recognition. Item five, we have none this evening. And then we'll come to item six, appearances and public presentations. We have either Ms. Tawana Culver, customer outreach supervisor, or Stephanie McMillan, one or the other, or both, maybe here. From the Energy Share Small Business Program. We'd like to recognize it all this time. Ask if you would, please come up to the podium. And of course, we've got, I think your PowerPoint is on the.
Good evening, afternoon, everyone. Hi. I get some greetings from Charleston, so I guess I'm kind of a neighbor. But I have the opportunity today of being a part of Dominion Energy Customer Assistance Department. Any of you all here familiar and know that Dominion Energy has a customer assistance department? Okay? We work closely with Low Country with these agencies here, right? The community action agency. But I'm here to talk about something that mostly benefits our business owners. Anyone in here, small business owners? Okay? You have a favorite barber shop, beauty salon, cleaner? This is information that I'm going to share that's going to be for them today, okay? So we have a program called the Energy Share for Small Business Program. We currently have Energy Share in place as a supplemental resource for residential customers. But we added a small extension to that for small business owners to, you know, give them a little bit of relief as it relates to their utility bill. So I'm going to go through the brief presentation today. We'll then take some questions. And I have the flyers for you all, just to give you a general information about it, okay? All right. So I hope my scare isn't in the way.
It's just not.
All right. Okay. So I'm going to bring this up. Text might be a little small, but I'm going to pass this out to you all. And if you would like, I can give it to you all. You can take one and pass it down. Would that be a preference? So, okay. So I'll pass this down. And then you can just take one and pass it along. But just in, I'm going to read what's on here, just so we all can have a better understanding. But Dominion Energy is partnering with the United Way Association of South Carolina to temporarily expand its Energy Share project to provide relief for qualifying small general customers with electric services. So basically, our small businesses. Through the Energy Share for Small Business Program, the company has pledged $1 million to assist eligible small businesses, nonprofits, and houses of worship in the South Carolina service territory. The program funding will be covered by our shareholders and will not impact customer rates. Okay? I'm going to just reemphasize that part. This is provided with the help of our shareholders and does not impact customer rates. So qualified business owners may be eligible for a one-time assistance with their Dominion Energy bill up to $2,500. And so what I like most about this program is the application is very simple and easy. It's self-assessment, about six or seven questions that asks your, your business name, who the contact person is that's filling out the application, your Dominion Energy account number, if you employ 50 employees or less, if you've been in business since January 1, 2024, and if you have a pass-through balance. And I'm going to go through all, through the qualifications, but that is all. It's a self-assessment. You fill it out on our website, and then it comes to us and we get it processed, okay? So here are the eligibility criteria. First one, you must be a for-profit business owner and independently operated or a nonprofit with a 501(c)(3) status or a house of worship. So I recently asked you, you have your favorite barber shop, beauty salon, your church. They can be eligible for this program. Now, they must be licensed to do business within the Dominion Energy service territory. So I'm speaking to you all today because you all are Dominion Energy customers and you're in our service territory. And the account has to be active, but must be separate from their personal account. So we know a lot of business owners that run out of their homes, right? That is fine if they're running a business out of their home, but it must fall under a specific electric rate, okay? And I'll give you those rates soon, because our residential customers have their own rate and our small commercial customers have another. They also must have a pass-through equal to or more than $300. Again, this is providing relief. So if the account is not in pass-through, then that would automatically disqualify them from the, them applying at that particular time, because it has to be pass-through. And this does not include their current charges. Must have electric service within the Dominion Energy South Carolina service territory and must employ 50 or fewer people as of January 1. Again, as a small business. And then to be considered for this, the qualifying rates might be, must be a rate 9, 11, 12, 14, 16, or 26. Now, I just ran these numbers off and no one knows off the top of their head what their electric rate is. But if you're a residential customer, most of us all have a rate 8, right? But if you need to know what your rate is, you can find out by a couple ways. You can go onto your online account, if you are an online customer. You can look on your bill. And on that second page, it will identify what rate you have. Or you can call our customer service number and they can give you what your actual rate is. So if you meet one of those rates as we have on the qualification sheet, then that's another way that you will probably already be approved. Now, I do want to go over some of the exclusions. Franchises or business arrangements in which the utility accounts are made by a parent company, those accounts aren't eligible. So if we do know an owner that owns, you know, a couple Papa John's or something, yes, that store may have less than 50 employees, but they won't be eligible because they're part of a franchise, okay? Government-owned business entities, except for businesses owned or controlled by a Native American tribe, are also excluded. And then the final one, a business principally engaged in rental properties by residential, commercial, or industrial tenants aren't eligible. So we know of a small shopping center. If that shopping center covers the utility for the whole, for everyone, all of their tenants, then that tenant won't be able to apply because their utility is covered by the owner of that property. So that's just something to look, to consider. But if you ever have any questions, of course, it's not, it's on my next slide. All questions will come to SBenergyshare@dominionenergy.com and we will reply for you within two to three business days, by general questions. And so I'm going to go over some frequently asked questions. But before I get there, just want to remind you all of how you can apply. Applications are open now and available at dominionenergy.com/unitedwaysc. And if you go on United Way's website for the association, you can also be directed to this application, because this is something we are doing in partnership with United Way. They're our program administrators. So once the applications come to us, it goes to them for approval and making sure that you get the credit on your utility bill. Applicants must submit their completed e-sign application via the web form. That is the only way you can apply, and that will be online. But like I mentioned earlier, it's only like six to seven questions. And then applicants will be reviewed on a first-time, first-ear basis. So the good thing about this is we opened this program June of 2023. It started the second half of the year. And guess what? We still have a lot of money. And I'm here today because we want to get this money spent by small businesses. And right now, my colleague and another colleague that works in the Walterboro, Collington County area have done a really good job increasing the number of applicants we receive from Collington County, and we want to keep that number up, okay? So I need you all to help us get this money spent. And the reason why we're seeing, I would like to share, this program was actually piloted in Richmond, Virginia, and it wasn't as successful. But South Carolina is actually doing a really good job. And we want to keep it going, but we got to get the money spent in the pilot to show that our small businesses are in need. Because we know most of the time, a lot of programs that we offer are specifically for our residential customers. But we have those small businesses that could benefit in addition to, you know, some energy savings type programs that they can also find online. But I just want to, you know, again, push and push the Energy Share for Small Business Program. Okay? Any questions so far? All right. So right here, I just want to give a little screenshot again where you would go. And to make sure that you have submitted your application successfully, you will get a receipt. Just saying, this is to confirm that we've received your application. But it doesn't stop here. Once you receive this, our team of application processors will then send another confirmation, just letting you know you've received it and just to allow us a little time to process, because it can sometimes take up to 14 business days, okay? But all of the information is online as well as the information sheet. And then just some frequently asked questions, and I'm going to get on this side. I'm just a quick side, so we can answer the ask these questions. These are the questions we've been getting from different counties, different small business owners. The first being, when will this assistance become available? Well, the grant for 2024 opened January, we're now in May. And so they're open and funding is still available. How long will this program remain open? Well, the application period for this two-year pilot will remain open until the funds allocated for the program have been exhausted. And we're not there just yet. Am I eligible for this program if I own or operate a business in my home? The service address of the business must have a qualifying rate schedule of the 9, 11, 12, 14, 16, or 28. Residential accounts are classified as a rate 8 and are ineligible for this program. So if you see that you have a rate 8 on your bill, you won't be able to apply for this program, but you can definitely look on our customer assistance page to see what other agents, assistance programs are available. But a full list of the eligibility criteria can be found at dominionenergy.com/energyshearsc or dominionenergy.com/unitedwaysc. Are natural gas customers eligible? So for this specific program, the answer is no, they're not eligible. But if you are a combo customer, and when I use the term combo customer, meaning we provide you with electricity and gas, then you can still apply. But in some of our service territories, Dominion Energy is only a gas provider, and so unfortunately, those applicants cannot apply for this program. There could be changes the further along we go, but we're still in the pilot here. So right now, just make sure you, we provide your electricity and then you can apply. How much assistance will a qualifying business receive? Qualifying businesses may be eligible for a one-time assistance up to $2,500. So I just have to emphasize the up to. And it's depending on what your pass-through is, your current bill, and how we would utilize our tables to determine your grant amount. How is assistance the first? And do qualifying program participants receive money? So we do get applicants sometimes who submitted and want funding towards their programs and services, but this is not a program that falls under our corporate philanthropy. This is strictly for utility assistance. So this will be in the form of a bill credit. So it will be applied to your, your current charges as it relates to your utility. And then the final question, is there someone with Dominion Energy who can answer my questions about the Energy Share for Small Business Program? I'm here right now. I don't want to use up all your time, but I can answer some quick questions. If not, you can definitely email us, which is on this sheet, and we will get a response to you as soon as possible. And so actually, that concludes my presentation. All right.
Ms. Culver, are you Ms. McMillan or Ms. Colbert?
I'm Ms. Culver, that's it.
Okay. All right. Thank you for being here. I have just, I have one quick question. I want to make sure I'm clear on this. So the criteria, the eligibility, I know it says here that you must have a pass-through balance, but that, does that add up now? In other words, if, I know people, if I'm sitting here tonight and I'm not delinquent on my power bill, but the program is out there, so I don't pay my power bill for the next two or three months.
Yes, if it's a pass-through, you are eligible. But like, we will abide in all of our communication that to continue with any payment arrangements that you have with us or a minimum payment as we're processing your application, because it has to go through the approval with United Way. So it's not a buy, you know, to wait until you become delinquent. But I mean, we still have some customers who are, you know, pay enough to avoid interruption of service. So you'll have an option of quality customer service or an extension as your application is being processed.
All right. Thanks for being here, very important, and appreciate you and everything that Dominion Energy does for us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Y'all have a good evening. I'm sorry, I have to go back to Charleston, but thank you for the invite.
All right. All right. Now bring us next to item seven, administrative briefing. Mr. Griffin is not present this evening. Megan, do you have anything to share with us?
Yes, sir, but I can get your questions. Yeah.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions? Those are the seats for now, until we get through the agenda. All right.
All right. Appreciate that. And we'll move on to item eight, public hearing. Is there a motion to go into public hearing?
Second.
Got a motion in the second, due to discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously. We have three items in public hearing this evening. The first is ordinance 24-0-01, authorizing Collin County to join with Walterboro Collin County Airport Commission and the city of Walterboro in conveying 10.07 acres of a portion of real property located at the Collin County Recreation Center, identified as tax map series number 132-00-00-028 to Collin County. Is there anybody who would like to address this particular ordinance? Hearing none, we'll move to item B, ordinance 24-0-02, granting an easement to CBP Walterboro 2 LLC on a portion of property owned by Collin County located at 113 Maple T Willis Boulevard, Collin County, South Carolina, and identified by tax map series number 178-00-00-205. Such easement is to be used for the construction of the Dollar General store to authorize the execution and recording of the easement documents and other matters related thereto. Is anyone who would like to address this particular ordinance? Hearing none, move to item C, ordinance 24-0-05, to establish pursuant to section 4-1-170 of the total laws of the state of South Carolina, 1976, is amended a multi-county business park in conjunction with Charleston County, South Carolina, to provide for a written agreement with Charleston County as to the sharing of the revenues and expenses of the park to provide for the distribution of revenues from the park among taxing entities having jurisdiction over the park to provide for a fee in lieu of adware on taxation and other matters related thereto. If anyone who would like to address this ordinance. All right, seeing there's no public comments. Is there a motion to move?
No, we come out of public hearing.
Yes. And we got a motion in the second, due to discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously. That brings us to item nine on our agenda, old business. Item A, third reading ordinance 24-0-01, authorizing Collin County to join with Walterboro Collin County Airport Commission and the city of Walterboro in conveying a 10.07 acres of a portion of real property located at the Collin County Recreation Center, identified by tax map series number 132-00-00-028 to Collin County. So move. Got a motion in the second, during discussion. Mr. Chair.
On line two of the ordinance document, it says 8.863 acres. And on this agenda, it says 10.7. Which, which number is it?
I am most concerned that it is 8.8, but did you tell me?
That's correct.
8.8 is over.
Do you want to amend it?
I amend the ordinance.
Commend the ordinance. Actually, the doc, you made a motion. Actually, the ordinance has the correct acreage.
It's just the agenda. It's just the agenda. So the ordinance is correct.
Okay. Doc, follow.
I'm, I'm, I'm speaking motion according to the ordinance. I'm okay with the written agenda.
Okay. All right. And that clarifies that?
Yes, sir. I clarify.
If you want a second, Mr. Scott.
Yes, sir. So just to read into the record so that I'm clear on the actual, because the agenda has listed this 10.07 acres, but in fact, it's 8.863 acres. All right. Hearing none, other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Item B, third reading ordinance 24-0-02, granting an easement to CBP Walterboro 2 LLC on a portion of property owned by Collin County located at 113 Maple T Willis Boulevard, Collin County, South Carolina, identified by tax map series 178-00-00-205. Such easement is to be used for the construction of the Dollar General store to authorize the execution and recording of the easement documents and other matters related thereto.
So move.
Second. We have a motion in the second, due to discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Item C, third reading ordinance 24-0-05, to establish pursuant to section 4-1-170 of the South Carolina Code of laws, 1976, is amended a multi-county business park in conjunction with Charleston County, South Carolina, to provide for a written agreement with Charleston County as to the sharing of the revenues and expenses of the park to provide for the distribution of revenue from the park among taxing entities having jurisdiction over the park to provide for a fee in lieu of adware on taxation and other matters related thereto.
So move.
Second. Got a motion in the second, due to discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Item D, second reading ordinance 24-0-03, to provide for the issuance and sale of not exceeding $10 million general obligation bonds and not exceeding $10 million general obligation bond and anticipation notes of Collin County, South Carolina for the purpose of derailing the cost of acquisition and improvement of construction, installation, and equipment of various projects and other county government facilities to provide for the payment thereof to declare the county council's intent to reimburse expenditures for some or all such costs for the proceeds of tax exempt bonds or notes and other matters related thereto.
So move.
Second. Got a motion in the second, due to discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Item E, second reading ordinance 24-0-04, authorizing the acquisition of certain equipment heavy vehicles by Collin County, South Carolina, by lease purchase financing in the amount of not exceeding $3 million. The execution and delivery of certain instruments, including a lease purchase agreement by Collin County and other matters related thereto.
So move.
Second. Got a motion in the second, due to discussion. Tonight is actually the, there is a change that needs to be made at the top where it's got the date for the public hearing, the third reading. Because tonight is actually the second reading. And up to see where it has the public hearing date and third reading. Item first, on the action. Doc, right here at the top. Second reading is actually, say, say, excuse me, May 7, 2024. Of course, third reading in the public hearing is on the third, yeah. Thank you for that, Kent, Councilman Taylor. So if that be the case, is that, doc, is that your motion or not?
Both of them. We had motion, uh, first, second reading.
Yeah. First, second reading. So you, I'm in the motion. With those changes to the ordinance?
Yeah.
I'm in. All right. The second. All right. And that'll correct that. All right. Is any other changes? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Now to bring us to second reading ordinance 24-06, to provide for the levied taxes in Collin County, South Carolina for the fiscal year July 1, 2024, through June 30, 2025, to provide for all other appropriations there, I mean, provide for other matters related thereto.
So move.
Second. Motion in the second. Any discussion? Any others? Any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Now bring us into item 10 on the agenda, new business. Item A, first reading ordinance 24-0-07 by Title Owen, authorizing pursuant to Title 12, chapter 44, the total laws of South Carolina, 1976, is amended. One, the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of adware on taxes agreement by and between Collin County, South Carolina, and the company known for the county as Project Bobcat, as sponsor to provide for a fee in lieu of adware on taxes incentive and certain special source revenue credits. Two, the enlargement of the boundaries of a multi-county industrial park, business park previously created by Collin County and Hampton County that includes certain property located in Collin County, South Carolina, now or to be hereafter owned and or operated by Project Bobcat and one or more companies related thereto and other matters related thereto.
So move.
Second. Got a motion in the second, due to discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Item B, first reading ordinance 24-0-08 by Title Owen, authorizing the county to borrow $1.5 million through the USDA Rural Development Loan Program for the construction of a new fuel farm and two T-hanger units at the Low Country Regional Airport.
So move.
Second. Got a motion in the second, due to discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Item C, resolution 24-r-30 to award contract imports with request proposal, FMD-18, for the purchase and installation of emergency equipment.
So move.
Second. Got a motion in the second, due to discussion. I just got a native point of clarification. We're not, are we not awarding? We're not actually purchasing the items, we're just really approving the discount and the, looking at the coins back there. Can you help me with that? Is that what we're doing? Approving them as vendors with their discounts?
Yes, when a county purchases the item, that's the discount for the county that receives the product.
And that's four of the five that's admitted, opposed. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously.
Item D, resolution 24-r-31 to reschedule the June county council meeting. And I'll point out, the resolution says June 11, 2024, which is election day. So if we move this resolution, my recommendation will be we move it to June the 18th.
Um, so, if we move this resolution, my recommendation will be we move it to June the eighteenth following June.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to eighteen.
Six. Okay, so we move to, uh, move the council meeting in June to June the eighteenth. Any other discussion? Hearing on all, they're saying by the thing I.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item E, resolution twenty-four dash R dash thirty-two identifying a project to satisfy the requirements of Title Twelve, chapter forty-four of the South Carolina Code so as to allow investment expenditures incurred by a company known to the county of Project Bobcat, its affiliates and its related entities to qualify as expenditures eligible for a fee in lieu of adware on taxes arrangement with Colton County, South Carolina providing for other related economic development incentives including special source revenue credits and other matters related thereto.
So, move second.
Got a motion in the second. Any discussion? Hearing on all, they're saying by the thing I.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item F, resolution twenty-four dash R dash thirty-three to officially name the conference room in the Colton County Board of Registration, Elections Office located at seventy-two Bells Highway as the Lynette V. Fryer Conference Room.
So, move second.
Got a motion in the second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, would, for the benefit of everybody, would you read the items?
I can't. Um, whereas.
And we have members from the voter election.
Oh, do we?
Yes, sir.
Um, all right, I'm gonna read. This is the resolution. Uh, it says, whereas Lynette V. Fryer served on the Board of Voter Registration and Elections as both a member and his chairperson for nearly twenty years, and Lynette Fryer, Lynette V. Fryer spent many years as a dedicated public servant and administrative assistant at Clemson Extension as victim's advocate with the Colton County Sheriff's Department and as an elected member of the Colton County Board of Education. And Lynette V. Fryer spent five decades in church and community service in Colton County as a volunteer with Youth Leadership Colton, Backpack Buddies, HCA Hospital, American Cancer Society, Roughland High School, the Vocation Center and the NAACP County Branch. And Lynette V. Fryer passed away April sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, and because of her many contributions to Colton County, the citizens and the vote board of voter registration and elections, the board requests the conference room in Colton County Vote Board, the voter registration and elections office to be officially named the Lynette V. Fryer Conference Room. That will therefore be resolved by Colton County Council duly assumed that Colton County Council hereby endorses the board of voter registration and elections recommendation that the conference room in Colton County Board of Voter Registration and Elections Office located at seventy-two Bells Highway officially as Lynette V. Fryer Conference Room and the Board of Voter Registration and Elections Conference Room in Colton County, Board of Voter Registration and Elections Office located at seventy-two Bells Highway is hereby named the Lynette V. Fryer Conference Room. Any other comments? I just want to thank the board for the recommendation. Lynette was a very special person.
Oh, yes. Board, would you stand for it?
Uh, if members of the board would stand.
Yeah.
She was a very dear friend of mine. Um, I spoke to her at a recent event, at the NAACP event, and, uh, I think it's very appropriate and I thank y'all for making the recommendation.
Thank you so much.
All the papers saying by the thing I.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item G, resolution twenty-four dash R dash thirty-four to authorize a waiver of various fees for summer twenty twenty-four mission served home repair programs.
So, move second.
Got a motion in the second. Any discussion? Hearing on all, they're saying by the thing I.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Resolution twenty-four dash R dash thirty-five to appoint members to board vacancies. We have, uh, Colton County Combinations Tax Advisory Board has one cultural arts vacancy. We have one outlet, Ms. Sarah Miller. Colton County Commission on Alcohol and Drug Deuce has one vacancy and we have one outlet, Miss Roman Cunningham. Colton County Board of Adjustments and Fees has one HVAC vacancy and we have one outlet, Mr. Joseph Prater.
Mr. Chair, move it by acclamation.
A second. Got a motion that may be adopted by acclamation in the second. Any other discussion? Hearing on all, they're saying by the thing I.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item I, resolution twenty-four dash R dash thirty-six to authorize acceptance and budgeting of various grants from fiscal year twenty three, twenty four.
So, move second.
Got a motion in the second. Any discussion? Hearing on all, they're saying by the thing I.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, and that brings the item eleven on the agenda, item for information, public record. We have to oversee. Uh, brings us now to item twelve, public comments. Um, ladies and gentlemen, at this time, anybody who would like to address, if you would ask, would please step to the podium. You did have to sign in sheet. Um, only person I have signed in to speak is Mr. Rachel Johnson. Um, if we would ask, would please come up to the podium, say your name directly.
Well, I'm here again. Y'all should know what I'm talking about. This ditch, because like I say, everything stops at my home. Thank God last week it was dry. I was able to get out there and rake out the leaves and bring that and see a snake. Bunch of baits, but no steak above it. They have seen snakes. And like I said, it is dangerous over there. If you truly, truly need lights, because for the past two months now in broad daylight, it has been shooting from the street through me. And I say, I'm scared now. He brought my bicycle and he could walk that side. It's back up in the daytime, but at night you cannot see over there on River Street nor Astro, congregation or church. You cannot see neither way. These are, and I am praying here another day. I can tell them no, you cannot go in there. The balls keep going in the water. I have to hit my crowd and then to hit the balls out. Like I say, I have little grams plus older grams, but they love that ditch for some reason. I don't know why, but I have to teach all my grandchildren about that ditch. And like I say, I broke my leg on both sides in that ditch. My ex-husband, Christmas, he went in that water, in that ditch. You know, it was funny in one way, it didn't get it wasn't when he tell me to help him. He about to drown. I cannot help you. I broke my ankle. I cannot help you out of that water, but thank God I had to call somebody to help him get out of that water. And it's dangerous over there. Like I say, where I live at, it's like a brush. They get in front of my home, they're going around and the stop sign is right there. And another thing that you keep looking at me every day over my door. Forty-five minutes speed limit. We don't need forty-five miles an hour. Where I live at, this residential area. And the houses straight up River Street. They need to change that sign as soon as they racist also where I live at. I had to call the sheriff department one night because I almost got hit and my neighbor standing there after we went and did with a elderly lady. You know what I'm saying? It is dangerous where I live. And then my doctor told me also it's a hazard for our health too, because I couldn't know what color that water is now. To be honest with you, in the front and then the marks were digging deeper again in the front. We don't need it digging. I can even see some of the people behind me, your in-laws. We can't even see their drain pipes at all, but they keep coming by me digging, 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 digging. They need to quit it. I mean, it's, see, and then like this time, man, you can't even sit outside from the schedule. They will tear you apart out there this time of evening. And I say, it's sad. I can't even enjoy sitting outside with my grandchildren. You know, we need help bad over here, because like I say, everything stops at my house. Thank God I wiped stuff when I got back home. It was dry. I went out to clean all the trash out of this. My niece, what you doing? I say, finally, thank God it dried. I gotta clean all these bottles and all this trash out of this ditch. You know what I'm saying? I said, because before you know it, it's coming back and it's gonna take months again for this ditch to dry. Like I say, last year, this finally dried last month, but thank God again last night, it's back again. You know what I'm saying? We need help over here where we live. Y'all, please, dominion somebody. You know, I tried, but they said, I have to. Live there in order for them to do it, because when they thought they were gonna reopen that club January, I called, they did put behind the club. You know what I'm saying? But thank God the club was closed and like I was telling y'all. Pray for the lady. The club is closed now, but two weeks ago today, she passed away. And her funeral will be Thursday. Tomorrow, one to five, at Fraser Funeral Home, if we have her week Hazel Saturday. And then Thursday, if we have her funeral at EMB in Whitehall. Y'all pray for her family, because her family needs prayers because sisters are on die, and they're not doing well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. And if anyone else does not, could sign up to speak for the light and rescue. And hearing all allude to council time, um, any council members got any issues or anything they'd like to bring?
Chair, I'd just like to say, we're talking about Lynette Fryer. I knew her real well and she was a pure sweet lady. I think that's hard if you could have told her. I think that's a good deal. Too, like I said, I knew her very well. I treated her in the family for years and years. I've seen her husband. And, uh, so I, 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 Lynette did contribute a lot. She was very involved in, in, you know, all aspects. She, she deserved to be a star.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Chair, certainly. I, I concur all of those statements, and I think most people that, that really knew Lynette Fryer real close knew she called me little buddy. But anyway, you know, certainly that's a great honor. And I'm so glad when the commission decided that that's something they wanted to, you know, memorialize and I think the community to reflect and see her investment working with children and families and in this entire community. One, one more thing I want to mention, Mr. Chair, Ms. Lola Richard. We've recognized her here several times. Um, if she hadn't lived till next week, she would have been a hundred and seven. And she passed, uh, this week in, in Columbia. So, let's keep her family looked at and, and, and. Mr. Chair, we recognize her.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, I didn't know this, but I knew her and know her well, but I, I do want to say the commission, you know, this is what it takes for the commission to stand up for people and organizations. I, I applaud y'all for doing that. I know everyone in the county does that for the different places. We need to honor the people that helped over this community. So, I commend you for doing that and thank you. Yeah, and I'll, I'll personally address, saying that, ladies and gentlemen, about Lynette, but, um, when I spoke, I guess just a few weeks ago, I told the story. One thing about Lynette, she never had a problem knowing where she stood. And she, she was a mentor to me because she would tell me, um, just as often probably what I wasn't doing right as what I was doing right. But when I ran for reelection one time, you know, you always, candidates always get up early and you go to the polls and we set up tents and we do all this stuff. I think it was like the third, the third time I ran, she, uh, I was headed to the poll probably six-thirty in the morning. My phone rings, it's Lynette. She prays with me on the phone. And I've never forgotten that. So, um, that's the kind of person she was. So, of course, I probably needed prayers, so. But, um, in any event, um, certainly an honor for her to be remembered. She always is remembered now. Thanks, thanks to you guys. Um, a couple of other things I do want to talk about is there was a letter in our package. Um, I want to recognize the letter was actually addressed to Chief Baron McCroy, Colton County Fire Rescue. It's from Congressman Nancy Bates. Um, it's a short letter, so if y'all, if it's old, I'll just go ahead and read it. It says, Dear Chief Baron McCroy and Colton County Fire Rescue, we wanted to take a moment to extend our heartfelt congratulations to all of you for the incredible work you've done in making our community safer through fire and safety, South Carolina. It's truly inspiring to see your dedication and commitment to fire safety and risk prevention, achieving the fire safe South Carolina community destination for twenty twenty-three is a testament to your hard work, training and outreach. By going above and beyond and reducing fires and related injuries, educating others on risk reduction practices and by consistently spreading fire safety messaging throughout our neighborhoods, you've made a significant impact in the safety and well-being of Colton County. Thank you everything, for everything you do to create a fire safe environment for all of us. Your hard work, commitment and passion for truly making a difference in our communities is a privilege to represent you in Congress. If there's anything we can do for you or your family, please do not hesitate to ask sincerely. Nancy Bates, member of Congress. So, I want to thank, um, Mr. McCroy and his staff, um, for being recognized by the congressman. Um, Mr. McCroy, I don't know if you want to make any comments or, or anything, but, um, certainly, uh.
Well, I want to point out that Michael Bates and, uh, Roger Johnson, President of Division there, County Fire Department, and they're the ones that put forth most of that work. And all of that with that as well, with the tiny that's fired, uh, smoke alarms that were able to do the businesses for free. And, uh, all of that plays a part in achieving a fire safe community. They, 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 they.
Appreciate your hard work. And, uh, I will point out that last sentence is if there's anything we can do for you or your family, please do not hesitate to ask. Uh, you should request, uh, another ambulance, uh.
Mr. Chair, while you could see on that, um, I would make a comment that people should, you've been seeing those know your zone signs lately. And, uh, so if you look on those stop signs or somewhere in your community and see those little letters C and B and E and so forth, please know your zone. We're going into hurricane season and you want to know your zone. And so, our fire department and, uh, has done a fantastic job getting that information out. You should have gotten notice in your mail already about it concerning it, but certainly know your zone and know when to evacuate.
Um, other thing I'll point out is, uh, in your package, everyone received a list of a sort of an update on the capital project sale type of projects. Just make sure y'all all got that, you know, look through that, you know, as your own, own region. Um, and then finally, uh, to, I was actually going to, to, um, address, ask Kevin about this, probably be more of a John Carpenter question. Um, I was wondering, you know, we, we pass these, these resolutions and ordinances, I should say, of all these fee lots and multi-county parks. And I know a couple of years ago, particularly in rural counties, um, some of these real small counties, DOR was having a real issue with allocations of these multi-county, um, particularly the multi-county park fee lots, uh, that would go into counties. I'm just wondering, you know, we, we have, I know a good number of those out there. Is there some accounting, some way we can get a list of the different fee lots in the counties? And I know there's sometimes we, we have the burden of sharing the revenue and sometimes we should have, you know, be receiving revenue from the multi-county parks. Um, and I know DOR somewhat tracks that, but that's an issue that apparently they weren't tracking. I know some smaller counties that kind of fell through the crack. And I just, maybe other council members feel the same. I, I'd like us to kind of get a, I don't want you to spend days of your time in doing this, but I'd like to get a bigger picture of the fee lots and how we kind of track the ins and outs of the different multi-county parks and the fee lots. Is that something we all?
Yeah, yeah. We need, we need that information.
So, um, not the task of, overtasking, but if there's some way, and it may be very simple, you might could do it matching a button.
John makes it look simple.
We keep hearing a lot of good things about you, so we're just trying to give you something else to do. Um, but if you could, uh, or between you and the administrator, if that's something we could work on, I think that would really give us a lot of knowledge and really maybe a sense of security about all of these, particularly the multi-county parks. Those are the ones I really mainly get concerned about. Um, if that's something we could get so that we can kind of make sure we'll monitor that properly.
Yes, and while you're doing that, I'd like to have some information on exactly, uh, how much, uh, taxes the county is giving up with this fee lot type thing, because, you know, it's, it's wonderful for a tight industry and I'm all for good industry and good neighbors. However, you know, we have, we have a country of one. We have, and it's, and it's a big business. We've got to have the revenue for it. And, uh, and now we're depending on most of it on our property taxes. And of course, when the industry comes in, we welcome them, but we also want them to be good neighbors and, and, and pay for, the cost in the county, what, 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 you know, what, what they're costing us. So, I, I'd like to have an identification of exactly how much we're giving up relative to this.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, the, the multi-county park stuff, I had to ask questions. I'm still new, new on the understanding of this, but is the state, the state has dictated this, we see from nineteen seventy-nine or sixteen? Is a way for counties that are bigger and more profitable to share with counties that aren't doing as well is a simple explanation? So, I, I, I too would like to know where we are in that balance, whether we're up or down and how that works, but just a simple explanation as to what they are. So, when going with Charleston County, obviously the county does a lot better than us as far as economically and towards their, you know, income in the county, um, or their budget. Hopefully, it's, um, benefiting us when we're sharing in small counties that aren't as where we are. But that's what that is. So, I, I got the definition on that myself, just to be more in tune with what it is. Simple definition, but it helped me some.
Yeah, and Captain Mary, and it's, to go along with that, it's, it's sort of a, uh, some other things that it does. It won't do many things. And John could probably give a whole lot more detail lecture on this than I could. When this whole idea came about, and actually developed over time, it wasn't necessarily seventy-six, but, um, the, the larger counties, um, and the smaller counties, because of sometimes the demographics of the smaller counties, we qualify for more incentives at the state level for employees than maybe a, a larger county. for employees than maybe a larger county that's a more, I guess, let's just call it richer county than, than we are. It's a way for them to get incentives for their development projects. And the payoff of that is, the trade off is that we get fortunately revenue. Now we can do the same thing with counties that are smaller than us. And so it's, it's, it is a good program, I think, that the state has developed. The problem is the accounting and the logistics of it is an absolute nightmare. I know, I won't specifically call any particular county, but I do know one county that particularly lost a lot of revenue, revenue that they were not receiving. And when they, when it was questioned, I think the Department of Revenue at that point said, well, you know, that's something that the county should have been tracking, it's not our responsibility. Well, they're not, I hate to say sophisticated, but you know, smaller counties don't have the technology and things that some of the richer counties have. So for them to maintain and count that is difficult. So I think Department of Revenue has tried to rectify that in some, some form or fashion. But even our Economic Development Alliance, you know, got involved in that with the question of that as far as making sure that program was run fairly and audited and managed in a proper way to make sure that we did. You know, I, I think, I don't think we have that problem. That's not my intent, my comment to John at all. I think we're on top of, we, we may be head and shoulders above a lot of other counties, frankly, but, but I would like to see, like Dot's saying, I'd like to see what we've given up and what we've taken, you know, how's this all balancing out? And, and I think that would be good information for us to know. But, but anyway, we do have the next item on our agenda for executive session. We have a real estate matter and a personnel matter, personnel being a school director and superintendent. I'm going to let you decide, but tell me who you want to have in the executive session to determine whether we go into a small room or we need to stay in here. But at this time, I entertain a motion that we go...
Mr. Chair, we'll be going to the executive session.
We've got a motion in the second, the discussion. Hearing that all effectively, I would say aye. Aye, you oppose? Motion carried.
Y'all behave yourselves. We'll see you next time.
Go ahead and call the meeting back order. Before we entertain the motion adjourned, just to clarify, everyone's here for the play that will be here. We have heard from your leaders, the board members, and we... Our administrator is not here, so we are apparently his daughter, who is present at the high school. Apparently he's musically inclined, got awarded some kind of award in part two. Apparently he must dance too much.
(laughing)
But in any event, we will be taking this under advisement probably on our next meeting. But with that in mind, everyone adjourns.
A little second.
Second.
Go ahead and play.
Oh yeah, Lady of the Beast.
Aye.
Oh yeah.
I think we can come and say aye. Any votes, it'll be our turn.